Good morning, Commissioners. This is the Public Hearing, Public Meeting of June 23, 2015. Chair Shree Navasan here. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin. Commissioner Chen. Commissioner Devonshire.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Voss.
Here.
Commissioner Washington.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have two public meeting items, items to be designated. Public meeting item number one is Riverside West End Historic District Extension Two, Manhattan, LP 2464. Lisa Kerzadech and Mary Ann Percival presenting on behalf of the Research Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lisa Kerzadech. I'm the Director of Strategic Planning and Special Projects. We are very pleased to bring to you today, before you today, the final extension to the Riverside West End Historic District, which has been seven years in the making. In 2008, the Department of Research staff were approached by the West End Avenue Preservation Society to consider a historic district along both sides of West End Avenue from 67th Street to 107th Street. In 2009, Research Department staff was directed to undertake an extensive one-year survey of the area surrounding several existing small districts. The boundaries of the extensions to the Riverside West End and Collegiate Historic District Extensions were determined as a result of that survey, and the three district extensions were calendered together on November 16, 2010. The Riverside West End Historic District Extension One, which is this blue shaded area here, was designated on June 26, 2012, and the West End Collegiate Historic District Extension was designated on June 25, 2013, and that is here and here. The district before you today, Riverside West End Historic District Extension Two, which was heard on October 25, 2011, is the largest of the three extensions. If designated, every single building on West End Avenue from 70th Street to its terminus at 106 Streets would be designated. The same can be said for Riverside Drive. If designated, nearly every building from its commencement at 72nd Street to 108th Street would be designated. The character and sense of place of the district derives from its two spines, Riverside Drive and West End Avenue. Both have a remarkably homogeneous character, lined by large apartment buildings creating a strong street wall, with some small clusters of row houses and mansions dating to the area's early periods of development. Here is West End Avenue, another streetscape, West End Avenue, and Riverside Drive. The side streets knit together the two great avenues and are lined with architecturally significant row houses, mansions, and other residential buildings. With the exception of some neighborhood-oriented institutional buildings, including schools and religious structures, the proposed historic district is almost exclusively residential. I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mary Ann Percival to present the architectural history of the proposed historic districts.
Built primarily between the mid-1880s and the early 1930s, the Riverside West End Historic District Extension Two centers on West End Avenue, which stretches from West 94th Street to West 108th Street. The buildings along West End Avenue represent the various phases of development that quickly transformed the once rural area into a dense urban enclave with spectacularly developed single-family dwellings and grand high-rise apartment buildings, such as these West End Avenue buildings by the noted architects Schwartz and Gross and George and Edward Blum. Rules established by the Tenement House Act in 1901 determined the form, massing, and maximum height of new residential buildings until 1929. These regulations contributed to the remarkably consistent height of apartment buildings, particularly along West End Avenue, even in buildings constructed almost two decades apart. In the 20th century, due in part to the rising cost of constructing and maintaining single-family homes and the completion of the IRT subway in 1904 that made the area far more accessible to the city's growing population, single-family homes and small flats less than 30 years old were demolished and replaced with apartment buildings of 12 to 15 stories, such as these apartment buildings on Riverside Drive, a rather astonishingly rapid transformation rare in the development of the city. Prior to World War I, apartment buildings of 12 to 14 stories with flat roofs, no setbacks, limestone bases, brick upper stories, terracotta trim, and projecting cornices were constructed on Riverside Drive and West End Avenue. The buildings were designed in the Renaissance revival and other popular styles by some of the most prominent architects in the field, such as Rouse and Goldstone. While Riverside Drive is lined with apartment buildings from this era, such as its 299 Riverside, at the same time, a variant of the apartment building was being developed, the Apartment Hotel. Considered to be a commercial building under the zoning law, they were not regulated by the tenement law in regard to their height and lot coverage. One of the tallest buildings in the district is the 29-story master building, which was originally designed as an apartment hotel. Along the side streets are the row houses, such as 259 and 257 West 97th Street, by the noted firm of Boring, Tilton, and Mellon, and smaller flats buildings, such as 244 West 101st Street by Gilbert Day Schellinger. The advent of the electric elevator made larger buildings of six to nine stories covering multiple lots possible, as seen in these buildings on West 98th Street. Throughout the extension, however, there are picturesque rows of house ensembles, such as this row by George Pelham, one of the district's most prolific architects, as well as single houses. Within the row is a rhythmic pattern is often established by application of elements such as bow fronts, bay, and aureole windows, dormers, and gables. By 1931, the most productive period of construction, which included the Byzantine Revival-style synagogue for congregation Achea Hesed, came to an end. In its broad array of residential building types, the Riverside West End Historic District Two represents the development of the Upper West Side since the 1890s and '80s, designed by some of the city's most prominent architects and executed in the dominant styles of their eras. These buildings form a distinct section of the city that complements the previously designated Riverside West End and Riverside West 105th Street Historic Districts.
Commissioners, the calendar district included 377 buildings. However, Research Staff now recommends a district of 344 buildings, based on research and evaluation that has taken place since the public hearing in 2011. What follows are the proposed adjustments to the boundaries that Research Staff recommends to you. Research Staff had initially recommended the removal of PS 75, a no-style mid-20th-century school building. However, West End Avenue is a nearly continuous, unbroken designated area from 70th to 108th Street, and for that reason, we now recommend it remain in the district as a no-style building. We recommend not including the school's playgrounds and adjacent tenement buildings. The playgrounds and the tenement buildings adjacent, which do not contribute to the historic district's sense of place. The tenement buildings are not a building typology that contributes to the district's character, and the north side of West 96th Street is not included in the boundary of the calendar district. I point you didn't work before playgrounds and tenement buildings. As calendered, the boundaries of the Riverside of the district include certain buildings fronting on Broadway from West 89th Street to West 107th Street. Research Staff recommends the commercial and heterogeneous genius character of the Broadway streetscape does not contribute to the sense of place of the proposed district, and that 21 of the 24 Broadway buildings not be included.
If the audience can please not disrupt the hearing. Thank you.
Buildings fronting on Broadway were largely included in previous districts and extensions. Of the 50 buildings along the west side of Broadway from 70th and 94th Streets, only 14 are included in any of the related historic districts. Within this proposed district, between 87th Street and 109th Street, only 24 of the 49 buildings were included in the calendar district, which explains the jagged and uneven boundaries of that calendar district. As we have noted, the character and sense of place of the district derives from the residential architecture of its two spines, Riverside Drive and West End Avenue. The buildings on Broadway do not contribute to the district. The commercial character does not contribute to the sense of place of the almost exclusively residential proposed district. The diversity of typologies and ages, coupled with a large number of new building intrusions, creates an uneven streetscape that is out of character with the proposed district. The lack of cohesion with the rest of the district is seen in this image. It's a streetscape image looking south from 94th Street, and here, moving north, looking north from 99th Street, and looking south from 104th, and 101st looking south as well. Finally, at the uppermost edge of the district are five row houses located on only one side of the street on a block made up of largely newly constructed buildings. Research Staff also recommends that these buildings do not be included in the district as they are a fragment, and the small number of buildings doesn't create a sense of place consistent with the character of the district. After seven years of hard work, we are very pleased to bring before you the final extension to the Riverside West End Historic District. With this proposed extension, the area between 70th to 108th Street along Riverside and West End Avenues would be protected with more than 1,200 buildings designated either individually or as part of the district west of Broadway. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa and Mary Ann. I just want to note that we have received a lot of letters in the past couple of weeks. A good number of them were asking us to retain the current boundaries. There were a handful of requests that we received which were related to PS 75 and asking us to keep that within the historic district. We had three letters opposing the district altogether, and then we've received letters from elected officials and advocates, from Congressman Nadler, Borough President Brewer, and Assemblymember O'Donnell. Their comments included keeping PS 75, and they had concerns about public testimony taken on the boundaries. The West End Preservation Society, Landmarks West, HGC Conservancy also noted to keep PS 75, but they had concerns that there was no public testimony being taken at this time. I know that the Commission has probably a lot of questions, but I think it's worthwhile to first talk about the public process since it's been raised, and I'd like to turn that over to our General Counsel to speak on that issue.
Thank you, Chair. The issue about whether there should be additional public testimony regarding a change in boundaries. The Landmarks Law, Section 303, requires that the Commission hold a hearing before it can designate, amend a designation, or rescind a designation. There's no statutory requirement that requires the Commission hold a hearing when the Research Department recommends changes to a calendar district or landmark site. The Commission is an expert agency. Its decision-making is not restricted to third-party testimony. It can make decisions based on its own expertise and the expertise of its staff. Historically, the Commission has made adjustments to the boundaries of historic districts at the time it votes, based on recommendations in a presentation by the Research Department, including the Gansivort, Adley Park, East Village, South Village, Central Ridgewood, and Park Avenue Historic Districts.
Thank you, Mark. Are there questions on that issue? All right, any questions on that? Okay, are there other comments or questions on this? Okay, well, yes, John?
Some of the commenters have written in about buildings that were designed by the same architects who designed buildings that are actually included in the district and were originally included. I assume they were all on Broadway, and now they're off. So it raises an interesting question, which is to say, you know, if we're, while the whole of Broadway, and I do agree with that, is not, does not have the same effect as West End Avenue and Riverside, if there's an adjacent building that is in the same style, how do we justify taking those buildings, carving those out?
All right. Sorry, Lisa, do you want to address that?
Sure, I can have it too. It is true that on Broadway, there are buildings designed by architects that are in the proposed boundaries of the district, but what we found on Broadway is that there is different typologies. So it was more stores and flats, tenement buildings, and not necessarily the building typologies found in the district. And furthermore, we were looking at Broadway as the streetscape, too. So it's the how Broadway connects to the character and sense of place of the historic district, of the largely residential character of Riverside Drive and West End Avenue and its side streets.
How does that deal with buildings that actually turn a corner? You know, they're where you're standing on one of those side streets that you just mentioned, where the building, while it may not set the same matchup with the streetscape on Broadway, it does actually firmly match up with the streetscape on one of the side streets.
Well, we included, you know, all of the buildings on the side streets adjacent to Broadway, and I think it's important to look at Broadway as a unique sense of place in and of itself. So it's the side streets, but it's also just Broadway as a unique avenue. So if we have jagged boundaries on the avenue, it doesn't treat the avenue regulatorily in the best way.
Does this mean that someday, some of these buildings, that some of the more beautiful buildings on Broadway, that they're precluded from coming up again?
No, I can answer that. I don't think that's the case at all. I think there may be buildings that are deserving to be individual designations. I think there are possibilities of us looking at Broadway in a different way, both sides of Broadway. So I think that the Research Department's recommendations are really looking at how these tie in with Riverside West End, which is really the heart of the district. So I think from that perspective, they've done a very careful, I think, incredibly sensitive analysis of the buildings on Broadway and its relationship to the two primary spines of the district.
One final thing.
Yes.
Sorry for being the dominant voice here, but...
No, it's okay.
The, there may be some confusion as to whether the school is actually, it was in, it was out. It's in?
It is. Let me just sort of explain that. West 96th Street was one area where the Research Department did look at. At the time of calendaring itself, the north side of the street was not included because of the typology of buildings. There was a significant intrusion of a new building, and it was calendered, including the corner building on 96th Street and West End Avenue. We initially thought of removing the south side of 96th Street along with the building on West End Avenue, which is the school, but in reconsidering that, the staff and myself recommended the Commission that we retain that. And while it is a no-style building and it's under the jurisdiction of the School Construction Authority, where we have limited jurisdiction over, the boundaries of the historic district are so compelling in terms of retaining buildings along West End Avenue that we felt that as a historic district boundary rationale, it's important to keep it. We find ourselves in situations where we have no-style buildings or other buildings that are typically not contributing within the heart of the district, and we don't necessarily carve them out, and I think that's the case as well. So for all those people who are holding the sign, PS 75, I just want to make it clear that, in fact, that building is going to be retained in the historic district. Hello, Michael. And, yes.
There were a collection of four or five tenement buildings that you said are not going to be included. It was on a side street. It was the last image. Assuming that this is not a thematic district, I have some misgivings about excluding buildings like that, the same way I would have misgivings about excluding federal-period buildings that remain on the Bowery. And I just, I have some strong misgivings about taking some of these things out, as John does, and I know you're going to hate me for this one, but I would feel much more comfortable if we could do a site visit. I know, start throwing rocks, but... Simply because the enormity of this issue is so present, and again, the misgivings I have about removing those tenement buildings, unless we're talking about a theme here, is very strong.
Well, I think we are talking about theme. Which is the, I'm just curious, which tenement buildings are you talking about?
I think that your, the tenement buildings on 96th Street?
Yeah, between the playground and the school.
The ones next to the school. So there are three tenement buildings?
There was another shot, and they were surrounded by toddler apartment buildings, and there were four or five, and you mentioned that somehow they didn't match the rest of the typology.
Well, it's looking at the character...
The typology, that when a developer moves in, it's going to disappear.
It was, in that case, not the typology, but the sense of place, the block. It's a block that's largely made up of newly constructed buildings with, you know, a small fragment of row houses and tenement buildings. So that was, we were looking at the cohesion again of the historic district.
All right, any other comments? Questions?
I want to ask some comments and questions.
You can do either.
I think that the point that Lisa Kerzadech and you, Chair, bring up about Broadway is, and the potential of our having to look one day at Broadway as a whole or as a continuum is very interesting, and I realize that this slightly departs, but you brought it up from discussion of this district extension. And to think about Broadway in the way that Randy Mason's described it as this memory site, the 17 miles in Manhattan, and the way that they really represent the kind of historical depth of development in New York as a cultural landscape, and landscape because, again, as Mason talks about it, this is, Broadway has predated the grid and really is a kind of a vestige of the geography, at least in the southern parts of Broadway. So I think that this is, if this can mark a kind of a beginning for advocates as well as for the Commission to think about Broadway and to start to think about language for its, I don't know, designation, identification, recognition, I think that's very important. It's important in relationship to discussions around development.
Okay, thank you. And the other comments? All right, well, I think then we understand your concern, but the rest of the Commissioners are ready to vote then? Okay. Well, just before that, I just want to say again, I want to thank our Research Staff for bringing this final phase of Riverside West End to fruition and vote. It has been five years since this has been calendered. The staff has worked incredibly diligently on this neighborhood, this area. I think we've shown our commitment and respected and been responsive to the West End Preservation Society, who reached out to us as well as others. I think the conclusion of this, if we adopt these boundaries, is, I think, an enormous amount of protection towards preservation by adding another 240 buildings to this neighborhood and bringing the total count all the way from 70th Street to 100, I think 107th or 8th Street, to over 1,200 buildings. I think it shows our, as I said before, I think it shows our commitment to this area, and it's one of, I think, one of the few neighborhoods where this agency has committed its resources over the last several years. So I'm very happy about the direction that it's gone. I think the changes are very respectful, and I believe that it's thoughtful, rigorous, and fair, and mindful of the initial request, and I think it also embodies the principles of historic districts that are in the Landmarks Law. Yes?
Just one more thought.
I want to add one thought to this.
Sorry, there. You know, the process of landmarking is a dynamic one. We're celebrating 50 years of Landmarks Law this year, and you could ask yourself legitimately, why in the world did it take 43 years to have this part of Manhattan viewed as a landmark district? Those beautiful images and the consistency and cohesiveness of the buildings. But yet, it did take that long, but we're here, we're doing it. And I just want to add the thought that the notion of Broadway as a separate idea, as a separate notion, in our dynamic understanding of what it is that creates a landmark district may well be, hopefully not 50 years out, but a few years out perhaps, until we can understand as a society why that whole district, that whole extraordinary avenue that predates the grid, is worthy itself of a landmark district. So I don't hold out that that's off the table. I view it as a different kind of a situation, and I will vote today to landmark these extraordinary buildings that we have before us and work hard to think about, in the near future, a different kind of a district perhaps adjacent to it.
I think I'm 100% agreement with that. I could not see myself voting against getting this done now after 43 years and delaying it to 45 years. So I am in favor of getting these 300-some-odd buildings designated, but I really want to make sure we don't forget Michael's comments and Fred's comments and Adi's comments, that and that we do actually move to the Broadway concept, however that turns out, that we do actually address that concept sometime in the near future.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the Riverside West End Historic District Extension Borough of Manhattan as a New York City Historic District because it contains buildings and other improvements which have a special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value, and which represent one or more eras in the history of New York City, and which cause this area, by reason of these facts, to constitute a distinct section of the city. Further, this historic district is part of a development, heritage, and culture of the city, state, and nation, as set forth in the Designation Report for LP 2464 dated June 23, 2015. I further move that the district be designated pursuant to today's discussion with the modified boundaries as shown in the map dated June 23, 2015. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This application and designations approved.
Item number two, item proposed for designation is the Corbin Building, 11 John Street, aka 1 to 13 John Street, 192 Broadway, Manhattan. The landmark site is the Borough of Manhattan, Block 79, Lot 15. It's LP 2569. Teresa Noonan presenting.
Building is a remarkable surviving example of a tall office building from the earliest period of development. Considered a transitional skyscraper, it was constructed in 1888, '89 at a time of tremendous growth and change in Lower Manhattan. The Corbin Building at eight stories and tower originally loomed over most of its neighbors, but its cage construction with cast iron beams and bearing masonry walls predates the development of the steel frame that enables structures to rise even higher. The building was designed by Francis H. Kimball, a prominent New York architect, whose pioneering work in the creation of Casson foundations and the design of numerous distinctive New York buildings, including the Montauk Club, the Manhattan Life Building, and the Standard Building, and several churches and theaters. and the Standard Building, and several churches and theaters. Designed in the animated Francois I style, the Corbin Building was named for its owner, Austin Corbin, a wealthy businessman and founder of the Long Island Railroad and owner of numerous properties in Manhattan. The walls of the building are formed of several types of stone, brick, and terracotta with abundant fantastic Gothic-inspired details. Iron window frames and many with embossed designs are also prominent in the design. Kimball's early training in London under architect William Burgess may have inspired his sense of rationality of Gothic designs leading to the emphasis on the grid. The building was fully restored by the MTA in connection with the construction of the Fulton Transportation Center, including the replacement of the parametal tower roofs, though not visible in this photograph, and reconstruction of the ground-level stores. On May 12, 2015, public hearing, we propose that the landmark site be a lot in part to reflect the historic site. Therefore, the proposed site is Borough of Manhattan Tax Map Block 79, Block 79, Lot 15, in part, consisting of the land underneath the described building. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Are there questions? No comments? All right, I just think that the Corbin Building's architectural beauty actually doesn't require any explanation. And it's evidenced by the photographs. If you walk along Broadway, it's just prominent and not at all eclipsed by the modern Fulton Center, which is just next door. I do want to thank the MTA for supporting this designation and also investing a considerable amount of resources to ensure its exemplary renovation and restoration. The MTA did work with SHIPPO, but also with our preservation staff. And just last week, the project received the Chairman's Award from the New York Landmarks Conservancy. So that was very exciting as well. The building's clearly much deserved, and I think it's a stunning asset to the streetscape of both Broadway and Lower Manhattan. So with that, we can move, yes, John, you want to say something? We can move to designation. I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the Corbin Building, 11 John Street, aka 1-13 John Street, 192 Broadway, Manhattan, as an official New York City landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as a part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristic of the city, state, and nation as set forth in the Designation Report for LP 2569 dated June 23, 2015. I also move that Borough of Manhattan Tax Map Block 79, Lot 15, in part, consisting of the land underneath the described building, be designated as its landmark site. I further move that the rest of the calendared site be decalendared. All in, yes, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This application or designation's been approved.
Okay, we now move to a public hearing. The item, public hearing item number one is the Stonewall Inn at 51 to 53 Christopher Street, Manhattan. It's LP 2574. The landmark site is Manhattan Block 610, Lot 1, in part, consisting of the land on which the buildings at 51 to 53 Christopher Street are situated. Gail Harris presenting.
The Stonewall Inn, the starting point of the Stonewall Rebellion, is one of the most important sites associated with lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender history in New York City and the nation. In the late 1960s, when few establishments welcomed gays and lesbians and repressive laws made it impossible for a gay bar to obtain a liquor license, mafia control of gay and lesbian clubs was a given. These raids were routine. At about 1:20 a.m. on June 28, 1969, when the Stonewall Inn was raided as part of a police crackdown on gay clubs, the reaction of the bar's customers was anything but typical. Instead of hurrying off, they remained waiting in front of the club, where they were joined by friends and passersby, mostly members of the LGBT community. As the crowd grew, its members became increasingly angry at the rough treatment some of the prisoners were receiving and resentful of the unfairness of the situation. Participants began chanting "Gay Pride" and "Gay Power" and throwing pennies and other objects. The police were forced to retreat into the bar, which became the focus of attack. Eventually, they were rescued. But for more than two hours, the crowd fought back while anti-riot police tried to clear the streets. The protests and confrontations continued for the next few days until almost midnight Wednesday, July 2, 1969, when the Stonewall, with the Stonewall often at the center of events. The Stonewall uprising was the catalyst for a new, more radical phase in the LGBT liberation movement. Within a few months, in direct response to Stonewall, several activist organizations were formed in New York City, including the Gay Liberation Front, the Gay Activists Alliance, Radical Lesbians, and the Street Transvestites Action Revolutionaries. Soon new organizations were being established across the U.S. and throughout the world to promote LGBT civil rights. On June 28, 1970, the first anniversary of the Stonewall Rebellion was commemorated as the Christopher Street Liberation Day, as Christopher Street Liberation Day. The main event was a march from Greenwich Village to Central Park. That day, pride marches were also held in Los Angeles, San Francisco, and Chicago in commemoration of Stonewall. These celebrations have since grown into the internationally celebrated LGBT Pride Month with events held annually throughout the world. The two buildings that comprised the Stonewall Inn were originally built in the 1840s as stables and in 1930 were merged at the first story and given a unified facade. Their combined ground-floor commercial space originally housed a bakery. In 1934, it was taken over by the Stonewall Inn Restaurant. Reopened in 1960 as the Stonewall Inn, a gay club, 5153 Christopher Street are within the Greenwich Village Historic District, which was designated on April 29, 1969, just months before the Stonewall uprising. From the time of the Stonewall Rebellion, the buildings still retain their brick plating, arched entrances, small storefront windows associated with LGBT bars of the era, and stuckout upper stories. In recognition of the importance of the Stonewall Rebellion, which occurred post-designation of the Greenwich Village Historic District, the Commission is now considering the designation of the Stonewall Inn as a New York City landmark.
Thank you, Gail. Are there any questions right now for the research staff? Okay, why don't we take public testimony? I know a lot of people are here to speak on this item. Public Advocate Lutisha James?
Thank you. So this Sunday, June 28, as we march in Manhattan, it's going to be a proud day. Again, highlight Gay Liberation Day, not only in New York, but in this country. Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. Thank you for allowing me to say a few words. As a public advocate of the City of New York and as the first African-American woman who was elected citywide, I enthusiastically support the designation of the Stonewall Inn as an individual landmark. As a symbolic starting point of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender civil rights movement, the Stonewall Inn, to me, represents the Selma, what Selma represents to the civil rights movement and what Seneca Falls represents to the women's movement. You see, in 1969, the Stonewall Inn was the only place where members of the LGBT community could gather and could dance. The bar was also the home of numerous raids by the police. And patrons grew used to these raids, except for the one on June 28. How ironic, June 28, when early that morning, eight police officers entered the bar in search of bootleg alcohol. And they began arresting individuals inside. But this time, this time, they threw down the gauntlet. The final straw had been broken. And those inside the bar rebelled. And the beginning of the LGBT civil rights movement had been sparked. The actions of the Stonewall patrons inspired the LGBT community throughout the country to organize in support of gay rights. And within two years after the rebellion, gay rights groups had been started in nearly every major city in the United States. On the first anniversary of the rebellion, the first gay pride parades in the United States' history took place in Los Angeles, Chicago, San Francisco, and of course, New York City. To ensure that the Stonewall Inn remains a part of history for generations to come, we must preserve the building, not just for the LGBT community, but for every community, for the African-American community, for the Latino community, for the white community, for the Jewish community, for every community in the City of New York. Everyone needs to know the story about rebellion. Everyone needs to know the story about individuals standing up for their basic rights. The site was added to the United States National Register of Historic Places on June 28, 1999. And on February 16, 2000, Stonewall Inn became a national historic landmark. But these designations, along with Stonewall's inclusion in the Greenwich Village Historic District, do not provide enough protection. Stonewall must be preserved for historic significance and protected from alteration by using designated, by being designated an individual landmark. It must be protected against rapacious developers who would destroy the history and this sacred place and all that it represents. So in closing, I will recall a recent quote from Glenda Testone. She's the Executive Director of the Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Community Center. People literally fought for our right to exist at that spot. And it's important that we preserve it so we can tell future generations that is where we stood up and that is where we declare no more. I thank the Commission for this opportunity to testify, and I look forward to your unanimous support in support of the designation of Stonewall. And I hope to see you this Sunday as we march in the streets of Manhattan. Thank you.
Councilmember Rosie Mendez? She's not here? Oh, she's on her way, okay. Adam Eckstein, representing Controller Scott Stringer?
One more.
Okay. Charles Anderson? On behalf of Assemblymember Deborah Glick, Congressman Gerald Nadler, and State Senator Brad Hoileman?
Yes, thank you. My name's Charles Anderson, and I will be reading testimony this morning on behalf of Assemblymember Deborah J. Glick, Congressman Gerald Nadler, and State Senator Brad Hoileman, who are away on business. Thank you for the opportunity to testify you today regarding the individual landmark designation of the Stonewall Inn located at 5153 Christopher Street in Manhattan. It is quite fortuitous that during June, which is National LGBT Pride Month, we have an opportunity to recognize a historic building that was the epicenter of the modern gay rights movement in the United States. The Landmarks Preservation Commission has a great opportunity to recognize sites that are significant to the LGBT struggle for equality and begin to acknowledge the dynamic history of gay rights in New York City. And while there are many important sites for the gay rights movement throughout this city, Greenwich Village and particularly the Stonewall Inn stand out in the American mind as a place in which gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender Americans fought back against discrimination and persecution. Regardless of where in this country a gay person is born, their modern understanding of the LGBT rights in New York City almost always include references to the Stonewall Inn and even Christopher Street. People travel from all over the world to see the building in an effort to feel connected to the struggle and progress. This building is greatly significant to Greenwich Village, and designating the Stonewall Inn as an individual New York City landmark will ensure that the struggle and progress made for LGBT rights will be forever remembered. We have already lost many culturally significant buildings due to their lack of designation and the pressures of development. It is imperative, in the light of the many changes to zoning and development in New York City, that we formally designate historic sites now. Otherwise, we risk losing them forever. Stonewall Inn is not the only building of significance that warrants a public hearing for individual landmark designation. We hope you also consider a review and hearing of other buildings which played critical roles in the LGBT rights movement, such as Julius's Bar and the Worcester Street Firehouse. We urge you to grant individual landmark status to the Stonewall Inn and solidify the LGBT rights movement as part of our history here in New York and Greenwich Village. And we thank you for your consideration in hearing the proposal regarding the Stonewall Inn and hope that the Landmarks Preservation Commission will vote expeditiously to preserve modern historic LGBT sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesus Perez, representing Manhattan Borough President?
Good morning, Chair Srinivasan, Commissioners, and Members of the public. Happy Pride Month to you all. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on the Stonewall Inn. My name is Jesus Betis, and I am delivering this testimony on behalf of Manhattan Borough President Gail A. Brewer. Any day now, the Supreme Court will rule on whether gay and lesbian people have a constitutionally protected right to marry the person they love. I for one, hope that we will have much to celebrate when that decision finally comes down. In a way, the long march to this day began at the Stonewall Inn. As you know, cities all over the world take to the streets every year to celebrate gay pride in late June because of the events that took place at the Stonewall Inn 46 years ago. The designation of this site as a New York City landmark would represent a watershed for preservation in our city as it would be the first site recognized in New York City, not for its architectural significance, but rather for its historical and cultural value to the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender communities. This site has already been recognized for its significance at the national level as a national historic landmark. And I also support further recognizing the Stonewall Inn with National Historic Park status. Landmarks are special. They are buildings, sites, or neighborhoods that represent significant architectural, cultural, or heritage markers in our city's history. Landmarks link us to the past, memorializing our roots and providing the architectural diversity a great city like ours deserves. We do a good job preserving the beautiful, but we must redouble our efforts to identify and preserve our culturally and historically significant places. In a city rich with architectural icons, we must not lose sight of the value of the varied cultural and historic heirlooms found among our city's storied landscape. For it is this variety that makes our buildings, our building environment, even richer. The Stonewall Inn may not be the most architecturally significant building this Commission will ever consider, but the events that transpired in that little corner of our city inspired a movement, the impact of which reaches across our nation and across the world. This building is significant and special. That is why I am pleased to testify today in favor of the LPC finally designating its first landmark in recognition of the LGBT community with the Stonewall Inn. Thank you.
Thank you. David Saltonstall for Controller Scott Stringer?
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Srinivasan, and distinguished members of the Landmark Preservation Committee for the opportunity to testify at this important public hearing. My name is David Saltonstall. I'm the Assistant Controller for Policy for New York City Controller Scott Stringer, and I'm here testifying today on his behalf. The Stonewall Inn is not just a vital part of our city's heritage. It is a landmark that transcends both national and international boundaries. In June of 1969, the Stonewall riots gave birth to the gay liberation movement and jump-started the modern fight for LGBTQ rights in the United States. Nearly a half century later, that ongoing struggle can be linked back to what happened at this humble inn where a group of courageous New Yorkers... at this humble inn where a group of courageous New Yorkers put themselves in harm's way to stand up for their human rights. The Stonewall Inn is more than just a historic institution. It is a national symbol of dignity and defiance, a symbol to all lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer people across the globe, that things can get better and that a small band of people can change the world. And yet, despite the immense progress that has been made, the fact remains that many LGBTQ Americans are still fighting for the right to marry, to serve openly in the Army, to be protected from workplace discrimination, and to be free from violence. That struggle is far from over, and that's why this designation is even more important, to show to the world that New York City actively celebrates the history of the movement as the embodiment of the American spirit. As President Obama declared in his second inaugural address, Stonewall is in the great pantheon of civil rights landmarks, right alongside Seneca Falls and Selma. On the eve of pride, a celebration of the gay rights movement and a remembrance of the courage of those Stonewall patriots now is the perfect opportunity to provide landmark protection to this historic site, so that the story of the courageous women and men of 1969 can continue to be told for generations to come. Thank you. Happy Pride to all.
Thank you. Andrew Berman?
My name is Andrew Berman. I'm the Executive Director of the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation, and I'd like to offer my wholehearted support for landmark designation of the Stonewall Inn. As you know, the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation first urged the commission to consider individual landmark designation of the Stonewall Inn early 2014, recognizing that the current lack of mention of the Stonewall uprising in the designation report left this building vulnerable to alteration or destruction. In 1999, our state and federal government recognized the historic significance of Stonewall by listing it on the State National Register of Historic Places. But only the New York City landmark designation under consideration today will offer the explicit protections needed to ensure the preservation of this building, which is so inextricably linked to the events of June 1969 that transformed our city, our country, and our society. Few sites anywhere in New York have the international resonance of Stonewall. The riots and protests following the police raid on this bar in June 1969 are commemorated annually in literally thousands of cities and scores of countries throughout the world. In this country, the reverberations from those events continue to be felt every day, and with more and more changes to our legal system and our society. In other parts of the world, people still risk arrest, violence, or worse, simply by participating in commemorations of the response to the raid on the Stonewall Inn. And yet, such commemorations and the struggle for human dignity connected to them continue. For these and many, many other reasons, the Stonewall Inn is eminently worthy of designation. However, it must be noted that this is not the only site in New York City which the commission should consider landmarking for its connection to the struggle for LGBT civil rights. As you know, GDSHP has submitted three other such sites for consideration to the commission in addition to Stonewall. These include Julius's Bar at 159 West 10th Street, which was the site in 1966 of the first planned civil disobedience for LGBT rights, the Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Community Center, one of the oldest such community centers in the world, and the birthplace of ACT UP and many other highly influential activist and service organizations, and the former Gay Activists Alliance Firehouse at 99 Worcester Street, home of one of the most impactful post-Stonewall activist groups. Hopefully, this will be the first, but not the last step the Landmarks Preservation Commission takes to recognize and protect sites of importance to the struggle for LGBT civil rights. New York has been at the forefront of this movement and contains a wealth of sites connected to its history, most of which lack explicit designation and protection by the LPC. I applaud the commission for taking this step today, which I know many, many people, including many current and former LPC staff members, worked very hard to achieve. Please vote to designate the Stonewall today, and please follow this good work by considering these three other sites for landmark designation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. David Carter?
My name is David Carter. The Stonewall uprising was a series of street demonstrations by the LGBT population against the police centered around the Stonewall Inn. The demonstrations began early in the morning of June 28, 1969, when the police carried out a muscular raid on the club. That first night, hundreds of protesters forced the police to retreat inside the club they had raided. When the trapped police officers were rescued by the riot police, a fight for control of the streets around the club endured for six nights in an effort to reclaim, to use recent terminology, LGBT space. These demonstrations thrilled those who witnessed them. Militant activists realized the opportunity, and a new kind of gay political organization was born, creating the gay liberation phase of the LGBT civil rights movement. These new organizations transformed the small homophobe movement that had existed previously into a mass movement, which is the reason the Stonewall uprising is historic. However, Stonewall has come to be seen as much more than just a turning point. All nations and significant movements have their moments, but have a power that exceeds what can be expressed by a mere rational analysis of their historic effect. For these moments are symbolic, because they represent the deepest truths of the human heart. They become emblematic of the best in us, symbolizing our hopes and dreams. Thus, when we learn history, certain stories and events are emphasized, whether it be Martin Luther King giving his "I Have a Dream" speech, or the flag being raised over Iwo Jima. These moments and images define who we are, exemplify our values, and thus are potent symbols. The Stonewall narrative is very powerful, for the event seemed to come out of nowhere and was spontaneous. And it happened in a seedy club run by the mafia. And the groups that first turned against the police were effeminate boys who lived on the streets, sissies rejected by their families, a butch lesbian, and men in drag. That such a group could lead an effective revolt against the police and terrify them seemed too good to be true, but this is what happened. Thus, Stonewall symbolizes gay people standing up for themselves for the first time and winning. It is for these reasons that it is important to landmark the buildings that comprise the original club. The structure of the buildings is largely as it was in 1969, and the edifice has remained intact. It is the first night of the uprising that speaks most to everyone familiar with this narrative, and particularly the beginning of the first night, when the police were trapped inside. During that most dramatic time, the protesters were on the outside, were trying to fight to get back into the bar to overpower the police and free their prisoners. Thus, the edifice was the focus of the protesters' attention on that first night, and that edifice is thus highly symbolic and historic. Only landmarking these buildings will grant the edifice protection against alteration. However, the LGBT history of this city is a cornucopia of historic riches, from the time before Eleanor Roosevelt to after the founding of ACT UP. And if you vote to landmark these buildings, as I hope you will, that will not be the end of protecting this history, but rather the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Andrew Dolcart, and the testimony is limited to three minutes. Andrew?
Good morning. My name is Andrew Dolcart, and I'm the Director of the Historic Preservation Program at Columbia University. I'm also an architectural historian with a long history of interest in the recognition of sites of importance to LGBT history. I was the lead author of a group effort that resulted in the designation of Stonewall as the first LGBT site ever listed on the National Register and subsequently as a national historic landmark. This effort was undertaken by David Carter, with David Carter whom you just heard from, and former LPC staff member Jay Shockley, on whose behalf I also speak. This hearing has been a long time coming, and I want to compliment the current commission for finally choosing to hold this public hearing. This hearing opens up new ground on several fronts. First, of course, it is the first building in New York City to be designated specifically for its LGBT significance. Although New York should have been in the forefront of such designations, it has not been, so we need to catch up. I am part of a team that has received several grants to undertake an LGBT heritage initiative to identify sites in New York City. I hope that we will find many that the commission can consider. Second, this is the first time that the commission has considered a building that is already within the boundaries of an historic district. Ordinarily, I do not think it necessary to call out specific buildings within a district for individual designation. However, when a site is of major significance and that significance is not recognized in the designation report, as with the Stonewall Inn, it is important that individual designation occur, so I am fully supportive of the commission's action today. Third, this hearing also opens up the issue of designations for cultural significance. Preservation advocates in New York City have long criticized the commission for its resistance to designating buildings for their cultural significance, although the law expressly permits such designation. I'm the co-curator of the current exhibition at the Museum of the City of New York's Saving Place: Fifty Years of New York City Landmarks. In the essay that I wrote in the book that accompanies the exhibit, I state that, quote, "The commission has always been hesitant to designate buildings based on their historical and cultural values, rather than on their architectural value." There are no official landmarks recognizing gay, lesbian, and transgender history, although I assume that's going to change, or women's history, or the importance of the Chinese, Hispanic, and other cultures in New York. No landmarks recognize the centrality of the garment district and its labor history," end quote. An argument has always been made that such sites would be difficult to regulate, but this seems to me to be a bogus argument, since these sites should and can be regulated to preserve the character that they had when they became significant cultural sites. Thus, the Stonewall Inn should be regulated to protect those aspects of the building that were there in 1969, when the Stonewall Rebellion took place. I hope that this hearing has opened the commission to considering other cultural and historic sites, along with those of architectural significance. As for the Stonewall Inn, you have heard and will hear a great deal of testimony this morning. I can think of no better site for the commission to begin its investigation of LGBT history, as this site marks the beginning of the modern lesbian and gay rights movement and as such is a place of major importance, and the building needs to be preserved so that it can be recognized as the place where this major movement traces its birth. Thank you for designating Stonewall Inn.
Thank you. Paiman Lothe?
My name is Paiman Lothe, Vice President of Urban Planning for the Real Estate Board of New York. We're here today to support the individual designation of the Stonewall Inn at 5153 Christopher Street for its historical significance, as it is clearly recognized in New York City and around the world as the birthplace of the LGBT rights movement. We don't come here often, but when we do, it's for ones that are worth it. Although the building is included within the Greenwich Village Historic District, we believe that individual designation of the Stonewall Inn will help to highlight and recognize its international, historical, and cultural significance. The Stonewall riots were a significant historical event for New York City that ultimately had a large impact across the country and around the world. The Stonewall Inn was one of only a few establishments that openly welcomed a gay and lesbian clientele, and in June of 1969, it was the site of a police raid and a week-long demonstrations. Since then, the Stonewall Inn has served as a symbolic gathering point for nearly every significant gay rights or pride event in New York City. Today, visitors from across the country and around the world come to this two-story, simple brick and smooth-stuccoed building on Christopher Street for its historical and cultural significance as a place where the LGBT rights movement was born. Whether for architectural, historical, or cultural reasons, the appeal of a property to attract visitors from near and far is certainly one important measure of its significance in considering designation. The significance of these events is undeniable, and it is a basis for our support. There is a clear and direct link between the unquestionably historic and cultural significant events and the building where they occurred, and the structure should be preserved for its cultural and historical value. This link provides the type of standard that we think is essential when designating a property for purely historical and cultural and not necessarily architectural reasons. RBNY supports the preservation of our city's history for future generations of New Yorkers. We believe the Stonewall Inn is truly meritorious of individual designation, and there is no better time to designate this landmark than during Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Corey Johnson? Oh, he's here.
Thank you. Where's the chair? Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to be here this morning. I'm Councilmember Corey Johnson. I represent District 3 in the New York City Council, which is home to some of the world's most significant lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender historic sites, including the Stonewall Inn. I want to thank the Landmarks Preservation Commission for giving me the opportunity to testify today and for considering the formal designation of this important site as an individual landmark. There are few locations that can be cited as the birthplace of a global movement. One such location is the Stonewall Inn. On June 28, 1969, the bar's patrons took a brave stand against what had become a routine occurrence, a discriminatory raid by the police department. They sparked days of protest that came to be known as the Stonewall Rebellion. They also sparked new visibility and awareness of LGBT rights around the globe. Within two years, major cities around the world began to rally around the cause and celebrate LGBT pride during the month of June, setting the stage for the global movement for LGBT rights. The city's recognition of the Stonewall Inn would bring it in line with the recognition it has received from other sources. In 1999, the Stonewall Inn was listed on the National Register for Historic Places. The following year, it was named a national historic landmark. Now, the LPC must act. Landmarking this site will offer it the strongest possible protections against destruction and defacement. It would be a tragic loss to history if we do not act to protect the Stonewall Inn and other important sites from potential destruction and give them the recognition that they deserve. Granting landmark status to the Stonewall will also do more than simply protect the building. It will reflect New York City's appreciation of our history, the LGBT community's history. When I first visited New York City for the first time, I was 17 years old, and the first place that I wanted to come in my first two hours of being here was the Stonewall Inn on Christopher Street. I stood outside and I felt a deep connection to a place that I had read and heard so much about. It is my hope that future generations will be able to visit the Stonewall, experience the site for themselves, and share in the same sense of wonder that I experienced as a young person. Today's designation would help ensure that future generations have this opportunity. I want to thank you for convening us today, and I also want to mention that history has also shown that a lot happened outside the Stonewall, on the street, on Christopher Street. And I think it's important for us to give recognition to that as well, not just the inside of the bar, but what happened on Sheridan Square on Christopher Street. And lastly, there are other sites that we need you as a commission to landmark. Julius is one of them, not that far away, and the LGBT Center on 13th Street. This is a great first step. I'm very excited, I'm very appreciative, but I look forward to working with you all to make this the first LGBT landmark and for us to get a few more done as quickly as possible. Thank you very much for this consideration today.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Rosie Mendez?
Yes. Yes, it is still morning. Good morning, Chairperson and Commissioners. I am here today to echo what my community wants and desires and what needs to be done to landmark this building. This building, as you know, is the site of the riots, the rebellion, where the community stood up and said no to police suppression and police discrimination, and from there on, it was known as the birthplace of the LGBT movement. And it is the place that we continue to go to, to gather at historic moments for our community. It is there that some of us went when Judge Doris Lynn Cohen gave us, through a court case, the right to marry. It is the place that we went to when the case was appealed and they took away that right to marriage. And then it is the place that millions came to in 2011, when the state passed marriage equality. It continues to be the place that people from all over this world come to. It continues to be the place that people from all over this world come to, LGBT people and our supporters, our allies, to see the birthplace of our movement. So, I think unequivocally and without hesitation, you should move forward with landmarking this building. And as a native New Yorker, as an out lesbian, as an out councilwoman, and the former Chair of the LGBT Caucus, it is something that will make us all very proud. Last year, the LGBT Caucus of the New York City Council did send a letter echoing our desire to have an LGBT Historic District. And so, I hope the commission does consider that and work on that. I'm not going to name the specific sites. We did put them in the letter that should be part of this district. And today, I am joined with our community just to tell you that this would be a very proud moment for all of us, 46 years after some brave men, women, and transgender individuals fought for our rights as human beings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gabriel Blau?
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Gabriel Blau. I'm the Executive Director of the Family Equality Council. We are a national civil rights organization pursuing legal and lived equality for the nine million Americans in families with LGBTQ parents. As an organization concerned with the protection of America's LGBTQ-headed families, we support the landmarking of the Stonewall Inn. Preserving our historic sites is important for our families. First, our families are able to exist with a certain degree of legal protection and recognition today because of the many decades of activism, advocacy, and civil disobedience. The Stonewall Inn was the site of a key moment in the historical story of our liberation. And to that end, recognizing and protecting the Stonewall Inn will mean that parents will be able to take their children to the site to help illuminate their history and tell part of the story of the pursuit of social justice. This is where we fought so that our family could exist today. This is part of your heritage. Further, the dignity and respect for our history that this designation would solidify is a commitment that this city needs to make to show dignity and respect for our children and our families, and a reminder that we all must continue this work. You've heard the history of the site. We hope that landmarking it will help us share that history with the city's children and our families. So, for these reasons, we support this effort to landmark the Stonewall Inn, because we believe it is good for New York and it is good for families. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney Worrell?
Hi, I'm Courtney Worrell. I'm the Northeast Regional Director for the National Parks Conservation Association. The National Parks Conservation Association is a 97-year-old organization advocating for all of the national parks in the United States and advocating for new national parks. We have over 1 million members and supporters across the country, with more than 12,000 alone in New York City. The National Parks Conservation Association's mission is to protect, enhance, preserve, and create national parks for America for the future and present generations and in perpetuity. We believe that critical historic landmarks such as Stonewall Inn deserve the same protection as our national parks. Stonewall Inn is the symbol of the LGBT struggle for civil rights across the globe, and we support a favorable decision by the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission to amend its designation reports to reflect the historic importance of Stonewall Inn and its history. We encourage the commission to consider it for individual landmark designation, thereby recognizing Stonewall Inn's special contributions to our nation's civil rights history. The designation of Stonewall is only the beginning of designations for LGBT sites in New York City. We also urge the commission to consider the designation of three sites: Julius Barre, LGBT Community Center, and the former Gay Activists Alliance Firehouse. Each of these sites, like Stonewall, are located in historic districts with no acknowledgement of their LGBT cultural or historic significance and their district designations. Their connection to these critically important events and times could be lost or removed. Stonewall is important to people in New York City, in the nation, and across the globe. Because of this, NPCA is holding discussions to determine whether Christopher Park across the street should receive status within the national park system. In fact, we'll be holding a meeting tonight at the LGBT Community Center at 7 o'clock to discuss exactly this issue, and we encourage everybody here to attend if they can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bryce Pear for Assemblymember Richard Gottfried?
Brace.
Bryce?
Brace. My name is Brace Pear, and I'm here representing New York State Assemblymember Richard N. Gottfried. He's obviously in Albany today. Thank you to Chair Shaw and members of the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission for considering the designation of the Stonewall Inn. I urge the commission to designate this historic site a New York City landmark. While this site is located a few blocks outside the Assembly District I represent, it is of extraordinary historical significance. The Stonewall Inn is widely recognized around the world as the birthplace of the modern movement for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender rights, one of the preeminent civil rights struggles of our time. It was at the Stonewall Inn in the tumultuous early morning hours of June 28, 1969, that LGBT persons outraged by the long history of widespread legal and social discrimination against LGBT people first joined in significant numbers to fight back against government-sanctioned oppression. Those brave pioneers helped forge an LGBT political identity and galvanize what was to become a worldwide movement for LGBT rights. In recognition of the historic significance of the events at Stonewall, LGBT pride ceremonies and parades are held annually on the last weekend in June, not just in New York, but all over the world. President Barack Obama cited Stonewall's historic significance in his 2013 inaugural address, in which he said, "We, the people, declare today that the most evident of truths, that all of us are created equal, is the star that guides us still, just as it guided our forebears through Seneca Falls and Selma and Stonewall." Already added to the New York State Register of Historic Places on March 29, 1999, in the same year, the Stonewall Inn was the first LGBT site to be listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and was declared a National Historic Landmark in 2000. The Stonewall Site is also located in the Greenwich Village Historic District designated by the Landmarks Preservation Commission. But these designations do not preserve the building as individual landmark designation would. Originally the site of two stables built between 1843 and 1846, the building was remodeled with a new arts and crafts facade in 1930. Its interior housed a restaurant until it was severely damaged by fire in the mid-1960s, after which it became a nightclub catering to a largely LGBT clientele. The Stonewall is now once again a vibrant outpost of LGBT nightlife and a symbol of New York City's status as a beacon of freedom, diversity, and tolerance. It is for its historical, more than its architectural significance, that Stonewall is eminently worthy of landmark designation, as are numerous other buildings previously recommended for consideration by the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation and local elected officials. I urge the Landmark Preservation Commission to approve the designation of the Stonewall Inn and move to consider these other worthy sites in LGBT history. Thank you.
Thank you. Sari Warden?
Good morning. My name is Sari Warden, and I am here today on behalf of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. The National Trust is dedicated to building a more inclusive preservation movement, one that recognizes all the facets of our diverse history. We cannot tell the full story of our country without everyone involved. Recognition and landmark protection of the Stonewall Inn and other LGBT sites of significance across the United States are critical to understand the often huge risks Americans took to secure social justice and equality. Many locations related to the gay rights movement, like the Stonewall Inn, are restaurants, bars, or stores, some located in architecturally significant buildings, others in more mundane structures with little architectural import. This creates certain specific challenges in terms of recognition and preservation. The current designation of Stonewall within the Greenwich Village Historic District does not acknowledge the Stonewall riots or the specific LGBT history of the site. Designation of the Stonewall Inn as an individual landmark would remedy the situation. At the Trust, we are working to expand the scope of historic preservation so that it includes more overlooked places. This is why half of our national treasures, our signature initiative at the Trust, a revolving portfolio of over 50 and counting threatened places of national significance, tell diverse stories. Sites like Shaco Bottom, a center of the Anavellum slave trade, or the Panama Hotel in Seattle, home to many Japanese immigrants, or the Palace of the Governors, the capital's Spanish government in the Southwest, help to tell a more complete story of our shared past. In fact, the Stonewall Inn was recently nominated by the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation as a potential national treasure. In this case, our involvement will go on hold, considering what we hope will be a Stonewall Inn's individual designation today. At the National Trust, we are committed to recognizing and preserving all the facets of our diverse history, something the traditional preservation movement has not always made a priority as it should. These places connect us to the generations who came before us. They remind us we are part of a long continuum of American experience, and they help illuminate the stories and struggles of our present. The National Trust encourages the commission to designate the Stonewall Inn as an individual New York City landmark today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Lasbada? Ken?
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Ken Lasbada, and I'm a preservation consultant testifying in favor of the Stonewall Inn, one of the most significant sites associated with LGBT history in New York City and the nation. I want to thank you and the commission for its leadership in putting forth this designation. I also want to thank the commission's staff, including former staff member Jay Shockley, for their efforts to include LGBT sites in prior historic designation reports. My interest in the intersection of historic preservation and LGBT sites began over two decades ago at Columbia's Preservation Program when I wrote my thesis, Landscape of Liberation: Preserving Gay and Lesbian History in Greenwich Village. My efforts, and since then, my efforts to promote the importance of LGBT sites in New York City's place-based history have brought us here today. Even though New York City was and remains at the forefront of LGBT history, politics, and culture, it lags behind other cities and the National Park Service that have already recognized LGBT sites. To address this deficit, I'm one of the co-founders of the New York City LGBT Historic Sites Project, a new initiative funded with public and private support that will, for the first time, identify, document, and evaluate historic and cultural sites in all five boroughs with LGBT connections. Since the project will identify potentially new LGBT sites, I'm hoping that the Stonewall designation is not the first and the last. If approved, the designation will be pathbreaking by individually designating a building already included in a district, and individually designating a building specifically for its LGBT connections. In the past, the LPC has been resistant to designating non-high-style buildings such as the Stonewall and other cultural landmarks. In this case, the regulation of the building's authentic and almost intact existing facade should be based on its period of significance, June 1969. The facade is a vernacular architectural expression of LGBT history in New York City. The size and configuration of the windows and doors are significant elements of the raid itself and the subsequent rebellion. The facade embodies the story of police hostility and mafia control when LGBT bars and meeting places were often dispensable spaces, frequently semi-private within protected interior environments. In closing, I strongly support this designation. Today's vote is part of the continuum in the advancement of LGBT rights, and as keepers of the New York's historic buildings, these actions will have a positive impact on all New Yorkers and generations to come. I thank you, and I look forward to returning at a future date to testify in support of new LGBT sites. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. David Eric?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David Eric, and I represent SaveStonewall.org. We've heard many people today speak about why it is important to remember, to document, to memorialize the historic moment that took place at the Stonewall in 1969, to dedicate why the Stonewall, along with Seneca Falls and Selma, deserves its rightful place in the 20th century's struggle for American civil rights. I want to speak about something present, about how the Stonewall has become an icon for liberty and justice in today's world. I want to take a minute and remember Tyler Clemente, a young man from Ridgewood, New Jersey, who was concertmaster of the Bergen Youth Orchestra. Tyler went to Rutgers University and was cruelly outed by his roommate in a notorious case of cyberbullying. On September 22, 2010, Tyler's sense of fear, isolation, and despair drove him to jump to his death from the George Washington Bridge. Several decades earlier, I grew up gay and alone in Ridgewood, New Jersey. I played violin in the Bergen Youth Orchestra. As a young gay man, my only salvation was coming into New York City to visit Greenwich Village, where for the first time, I felt safe, welcomed, and accepted. This reflected one of the great migrations of the 20th century, as literally thousands of LGBT young people clamored to trailways and Greyhound bus stations across the country to make their way to cities with concentrated LGBT communities where they could finally be themselves. The statistics about LGBT youth are staggering. According to Glisten in the National School Climate Survey from 2013, 56% of LGBT students feel unsafe at school, 74% are verbally harassed, 36% are physically harassed, 30% miss days of school because they are afraid. And what is worse, 62% of students who report an incident to school staff indicate that the administration does nothing in response. Most importantly, the Trevor Project reports that LGBT youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide. This represents one of the great challenges for the LGBT community, the fact that we grow up isolated within our own families. In Andrew Solomon's book, Far from the Tree, he describes vertical and horizontal identities. Vertical identities are transmitted in families, like race, religion, or language, while horizontal identities are transmitted by peers, such as being deaf, being differently abled, or being LGBT. As we approach the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall Uprisings, we are standing on the brink of an organic explosion of activity dedicated to uncovering and documenting LGBT lives: the building of the AIDS Memorial Park across from St. Vincent's, the launch of the NYC LGBT Historic Sites Project, the creation of the LGBT Heritage Walking Trail, the founding of an LGBT History Museum, and the possible creation of the Stonewall National Park at Christopher Park. I am Tyler Clemente. We are all Tyler Clemente. The decision today to designate the Stonewall as a New York City landmark is the first step in making LGBT history available to all. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Dr. Gil Horowitz?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Dr. Gil Horowitz. I am/was a Stonewall rioter. I represent many of the actual rioters in the Stonewall riots of 1969, June. I was arrested on the second and largest night demonstration of the Stonewall riots. I've lived, worked, gone to school in Greenwich Village for over 60 years, a lifetime New Yorker for nearly 80 years, fortunate to have been born on the same day and year as Pope Francis. I was a Stonewall rioter arrested on the second night of the riots, the largest riots. At that time, I was already an assistant professor at New York University and one of two research psychologists in the office of the chancellor at headquarters for the City School District of New York. By the way, of the LGBT, I'm the B in the LGBT, I'm a bisexual male. Said by some psychologist, they not exist, I exist. And I understood at the time that to be LGBT was like having red hair or being left-handed, unusual but not pathological. My colleagues in psychology and psychiatry did not yet agree with me. They would come to agree not yet at that time. The Stonewall riots marked a watershed in what was to become the gay rights movement. It is unclear what would have happened It is unclear what would have happened had the Stonewall riots not taken place, the road not taken. Perhaps there would have been a different path to gay rights. We'll never know. What we do know is that President Obama stated in his second State of the Union address from Seneca Falls to Selma to Stonewall. I totally and heartily approve the Stonewall Landmarks proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kristabel Goff?
Kristabel Goff for the Society for the Architecture of the City. Well, this is a festive time as well as a time to remember what remains to be done. And here I see old friends getting married, and for heaven's sake, my next-door neighbor, the Stonewall Inn, up for designation. Today, we hope the Commission will be commemorating an important moment in the history of civil rights in the United States. The Stonewall Inn, for the main part, just its street front, is a major destination, as I well know, having seen everyone outside, and has become virtually a place of pilgrimage for visitors from all over the world. To ensure that it remains recognizable, this designation as an individual landmark is necessary. As part of the Historic District, the 20th century alteration that is now the face of Stonewall could be subject to alteration, even in some respects with staff-level permits. The Historic District designation report that governs such determinations was written before the historic event occurred. Who knew that one reform could lead to another in this way? The administrative dilemma of refining and controlling permit issuance in an evolving and ever-growing roster of landmarks is solved, in this case, by individual landmark designation. We hope this will be the first among many, and especially, I've been asked to mention the GAA Firehouse in the Soho Historic District. We hope that any future change to Stonewall will include an owner initiative, which it would have to be, to rebuild the great neon sign that used to shout "Stonewall" to everyone on Christopher Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Goldwin?
Good morning, Chair Srinivasan and Commissioners. I'm Andrea Goldwin, speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. The Conservancy is pleased to join preservationists, community advocates, and elected officials supporting designation of the Stonewall Inn as an individual landmark. The Stonewall Inn was the birthplace of the Stonewall Rebellion, a site critical to lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender history. The building, while already included within the Greenwich Village Historic District, deserves an additional layer of recognition, as the district designation preceded the significant historic events at the Stonewall, which are therefore not included in the designation report. Individual landmark status will ensure that features of the building associated with the era of the rebellion will receive protection from the LPC, especially if there are future applications for substantial alteration. The Conservancy applauds this proposed designation and hopes that it is the first of many recognizing milestones in LGBT history and in other recent cultural movements significant to New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Landman?
Good morning. For identification purposes, I was a former chair of Community Board One Landmarks Committee and a land use lawyer and professor at NYU. And I want to focus sort of on down the block, where there was another building where an event happened. It wasn't architecturally designated because of its beauty, but the Triangle Shirtwaist Factory Fire down on Waverly at NYU, the Brown Building. And I think here, every year in March, there's a fire department comes out with the fire trucks, and there's an event to remember what happened, the origins of the labor movement, the occupational safety laws. And here is an example where the Landmarks Preservation Commission did the right thing, and for historical reasons, not because of the architectural significance of the buildings or the beauty of the building, for the event that happened there, a tragic, terrible event, designated the building. And in that sort of vein, I think that it is, there is precedence, and I think this would, as everyone has said before me, is the right thing to do to give an extra layer of protection for this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita Isola?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Anita Isola. I am, I serve on the board of the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation. I'm a lifelong village resident. And coincidentally, in 1941, my parents had their wedding reception at the Stonewall Inn, when it was a restaurant. And I understand it was quite an event. In any event, I urge you not to pass up this opportunity to memorialize the beginning of another great human rights movement, a global movement that started right in our neighborhood. As New Yorkers, we should be very proud of that. We're very fortunate to have it, and only you could preserve this edifice. All these other designations have been wonderful, but it's not enough. It would be a great feather in the cap of New York City to have this, and I also urge you to consider the other three sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Zay?
Good morning, Commissioners. Barbara Zay of the Historic District's Council. HDC supports the designation of the Stonewall Inn as an individual landmark. While the structure itself is already protected as part of the Greenwich Village Historic District, this designation would more intentionally acknowledge and honor this site's cultural and historical significance to our city and indeed the world. We do not need to state the many-layered importance of historic architecture to the urban experience in this forum, except to say that this agency's hard work in designating buildings for their architectural merits has served to safeguard this vital aspect of the urban experience. However, sites designated principally for their cultural and historic values, such as the recent designation of Tammany Hall, are a rarer breed. Advocates across the city are constantly pushing for landmark status for sites of cultural and historical importance, including 40 and 42 Bowery, two federal houses dating back to 1807, significant for their age, but also as the location where the politically-charged and impactful Dead Rabbits Riot of 1857 began. Another such site is Tin Pan Alley, the birthplace of American popular music, whose merits, despite widespread public support, have not been recognized with landmark status as of yet. In this 50th anniversary year, the preservation community is often reflecting on ways to enhance and improve the scope of the Landmarks Law. Sites such as the Stonewall Inn, famous as the birthplace of the LGBT pride movement, are crucial to the story of our city. Protecting the physical spaces that embody history like Stonewall is a crucial, if less traditional, task with which the Landmarks Commission is charged. In a perfect world, the agency would also have the power to protect the characteristics that support and define the significance of such sites, like ensuring that the Stonewall Inn remains a public gathering place in perpetuity. Perhaps the strengthening of the law by introducing this type of regulation is something we can work toward and celebrate at the centennial of New York City's Landmarks Law. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Monis?
Good morning, and thank you for hosting this vital discussion. My name is Glenn Monis. I'm an activist with a history of involvement in many community-based organizations and efforts. I was born in 1961, eight years before the Stonewall uprising. As a young man, struggling to make sense of my sexuality, there were very few resources available to help me. I remember going to the Queens Public Library in the area where I grew up, and in the card catalog, I found maybe two books about homosexuality, and I learned that I would have to travel to Greenwich Village in order to read them, which I did. I soon came to understand that the village, and in particular, the area around Sheridan Square, was a place where I could learn who I was and who I could become. The uniqueness of New York City is that when we change and build, we also preserve. Try learning about history in Los Angeles. Not easy. Plaques alone do not evoke the events that took place at a significant site like the Stonewall Inn, nor do they evoke the era during which they took place. What will a young person coming to terms with sexuality see and learn when they visit the village today? What about in 50 years from now? Please preserve our history for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Faurath?
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Jim Faurath. I am actually one of the only people that was a participant in four nights of Stonewall. I moved to Greenwich Village in 1960, in '74 today. I do know what the village was like. I do know what it was like to be a homosexual. I do know what it was like to have to hide yourself. I do know what it was like to be harassed by the police. I do know what it was like to be harassed by the mafia. I'm here today to support the landmarking of 5153 Christopher Street. But I'm going to ask you to really consider some of the things that have not been said today, and all the history is important. Do not landmark a bar. Landmark a building. To me, the Stonewall Inn continues to remain a symbol of our oppression, not our liberation. In front of the Stonewall Bar, at 10:30 that evening, not midnight, not early morning, as has been written many times, at 10:30, two police officers arrived to get a payoff. The police were complicit with the mob, with the mafia, with organized crime, and operating a number of illegal bars in the village, of which I was grateful that they were there, because it was the only place that we could go, those bars, to feel safe, to meet people, and to dance. But the Stonewall Bar was an awful place, and it's been documented about the things that were wrong inside. What I want you to, what I'm really here to talk about is the language that you use when you rightly landmark this building. You've heard some people call about riots. Nothing documents the use of the word "riot." If you look at police records, if you look at hospital records, and you look at destruction, you will see there is nothing that qualifies as a riot. I was in two riots in Newark and in Los Angeles. I know the difference. We were gay people, for the majority of the people that were there that first night, up until 2 o'clock in the morning. We do not behave in the way that the straight template of the '60s wants to turn this kind of event that changed history into a riot, nor was it an uprising. It was spontaneous. It was not planned. An uprising is planned, so the language becomes very, very, very important. I commend you for the righteous act you're going to take. It's important, it's necessary, but please, four nights in the streets, that started in front of a building located at 5153 Christopher Street, landmark the building, but be very clear that you're not endorsing what went on there. What changed history was not inside the bar. What changed history took place in the street. On the third night of Stonewall, the Gay Liberation Front was founded. Now, I'm one of the people that Martin Duberman wrote about, the seven of us, in the first book about Stonewall. I'm also a co-founder of the Gay Liberation Front in 1969, and one of the four people that sat in and became founding board members of the LGBT, it wasn't called that then, it was called the New York City Lesbian and Gay Community Services Center. I'm also a founding member of ACT UP. I have been active ever since that moment, that I happened by happenstance.
Sir, I'm sorry, sir, yes, if you can just...
It changed my life, that. But also, I gave up the career that I had as an actor, because you could not be out in 1969. I had been on Broadway, had been off Broadway. Fundamentally changed my life, and I have no regrets about that. But it's about time that these landmarks happen, and there are many more places than the three that have been mentioned. The three that are mentioned are important. I will provide you with a list of other places that are appropriate to landmark. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Max Yeston?
Is it afternoon yet? Is it still morning? Okay. My name is Max Yeston, and I'm a preservationist. I first want to take the opportunity to congratulate the Commission for granting protection last week to the Henry and Susan McDonald House and the Modern M.H. Rankin-Derry Building, both of which will make wonderful additions to Brooklyn's living history. At the same time, I wish to go on record that I am extremely disappointed with the Commission's decision this morning to exclude high-quality apartment buildings and French flats from the proposed West End Avenue Historic District extension, which had no business being carved out. With that said, Barack Obama made history as the first U.S. president to mention an LGBT rights struggle in an inauguration speech. With same-sex marriage on the verge of becoming the law of the land, this is further evidence that the civil liberties and struggles of the LGBT community are at long last being more widely recognized. Likewise, in the field of historic preservation, great strides have been made from venerating primarily grand mansions associated with prominent political leaders, to recognizing the cultural value of sites associated with the Underground Railroad, civil rights movement, and the United Farm Workers. Let us continue to expand what we as a nation defined as nationally significant by granting the Stonewall Inn individual landmark protection. Though safeguarded by the larger Greenwich Village Historic District, assigning this salient status to Stonewall sends a message that this site deserves the same legal protection and cultural recognition as a Revolutionary War battlefield or the scene of a labor struggle. Let today be a call to action, not merely to recognize and designate this site, but others relevant to the LGBT history in and around the village, including Julius's Bar at 159 West 10th Street, the LGBT Community Center at 208 West 13th Street, and the former Gay Activists Alliance Firehouse at 99 Worcester Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Martin Boyle?
Boyer? Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Martin Boys, and I'm a Stonewall veteran from the first night and the other nights of the Stonewall uprising, as David Carterwell put it. I was born in New York City in the Village. I was raised across the street from the U.A., which was very significant and important to me, because as a youth adolescent, every week, a new flag would light. Every week, a new dignity was found by someone's world. I loved history because of where I was born, and finally, at 13, I started reading gay history, but you couldn't read gay history, you had to find it. I found it at the local library, which was the 42nd Street Library, alone with other people creeping around so that others wouldn't see what we were reading. Not very nice. There was no monument then, ladies and gentlemen, no monument. I did find a monument to gays, though, and that was outside of Munich, at Dachau. There was a little museum. I saw the pink patch. I couldn't leave it. I thought my troubles were going to be episodic, that were going to be systematic. There was a man, a redneck, somewhere down south, who said Hitler was right about some things. That was the nicest thing that man said. Let's give our youth something, just to look at, to have a drink, to gaze. I understand in the ancient world, lovers had tombs of great lovers where they could place flowers and make vows of love. We have nothing. Stonewall is about the spirit, independence, and those who know history, harmonious and democracy, and have no doubt about it, ladies and gentlemen. In some ways or other, we are all Stonewall veterans. Please do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew Tagliani? Sorry, I got that wrong.
Good morning, Commissioner Srinivasan and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I am Drew Tagliabue, Executive Director of PFLAG New York City. PFLAG is parents, family, and friends of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people. We are an organization founded here in New York City in 1973, just a few blocks from the Stonewall Inn. We've grown into the largest family... We've grown into the largest family-based grassroots organization, working to protect the safety and dignity of and on behalf of full equality for our loved ones who are LGBT. We have more than 200,000 members in every state across the country. PFLAG families know the Stonewall Inn as the birthplace of the modern struggle for full equality for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people. The Stonewall riots of June 1969 were a turning point in the movement for LGBT civil rights, when people bravely stood up against state-sanctioned harassment and social shaming that had gone on for too long. As an organization, PFLAG has concrete evidence of the importance of landmarks of LGBT, the LGBT civil rights movements to our wide and diverse membership. PFLAG was born in a meeting room at the Church of the Village at 201 West 13th Street, at the corner of 7th Avenue, a building which already has landmark status. There's a plaque on the building noting that our founders Jean and Jules Manford joined a small group of other parents and created the first family-based organization that stood up and worked on behalf of their children and other loved ones who were LGBT. There are now countless photos of PFLAG members from across the country standing at that plaque. They share those photos on Facebook, on Instagram, and every other way that you can share photos these days. Proud of the fact that they are visiting New York City, that they are visiting Greenwich Village, and really see it as the birthplace of the movement for LGBT civil rights. For these families, it's a highlight of their trip to New York, where the movement for LGBT equality began. We, as New Yorkers, must be responsible custodians for these historic sites and preserve them for the rest of the country and the rest of the world. We at PFLAG therefore call on you to grant landmark status to the Stonewall Inn. It's essential that we protect it for future generations. And we would also note that the Stonewall Inn is not the only significant site of LGBT history in the village. As I noted, the Church of the Village has protection, not specifically relating to its LGBT history, although the plaque about PFLAG has added to that. But we do call on you also in the future to consider the NYC LGBT Community Center, Julius Bar, and the Former Gay Activists Alliance Firehouse. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Any more speakers? All right, in that case, we can close the hearing. Well, clearly, the people have spoken. And maybe this is somewhat unprecedented move, but we've had our hearing today, and I think it would be fabulous if the Commission agrees to take this to vote today. Are there questions for our research staff or comments? Any questions? All right. This is sort of interesting. New York is probably one of the most intense and dynamic cities in the world, and I would say it's probably, it is, the most intense and dynamic city. But when you compare it to other cities globally, it's actually quite young. And in its infancy, it really became a model of a metropolis claiming itself and its identity, power, wealth, sophistication, culture. But it also represents change, maternity, diversity, and freedom. We as the keepers of New York's social and cultural heritage ensure that New York's history is always present and never the past. The designation of Stonewall Inn as an individual landmark represents one of the city's most powerful movements in our era that changed a nation and liberated millions of LGBT community all over the nation. The events that transpired 46 years ago at this little hidden bar in Greenwich Village propelled the LGBT activism with such fervor and commitment that now, the international LGBT community and others recognize this modest little building as the birthplace of the modern gay rights movement. While the building has been protected over the past five decades as a part of the Greenwich Village Historic District, the events that transpired occurred just months after its designation. More recent districts have included cultural histories as a part of our designations in many of the communities, and it's become a part of the city's narrative. But it is clear in this case that the significance of Stonewall Inn demands recognition in its own right, and with the city's imprimatur, this will be the first LGBT individual landmark of the city. It's particularly poignant that this vote is taking place at the commencement of Pride Week. I would like to explicitly thank and recognize those in the audience who actually participated in the rebellion in June of 1969, and for their courage and contribution to this significant living and dynamic city history, and acknowledge and what we celebrate here today. And I'd also like to thank our research staff, Mary Beth Betts, Gail Harris, Chris Brazzi, and I know that Jay Shotley is in the audience, who worked tirelessly on this issue as well. I'd like to thank him for his contribution. I also hope that once we designate this, that people, New Yorkers, everyone, will celebrate this designation along with all their other festivities during this coming week, as well as on the parade. I'm sure other Commissioners have comments that they'd like to introduce into the record? Yes? Yes. John.
To follow up on the Chair's point, Professor Dolgart and others raise a significant issue, the question being, when is a stable not just a stable? Recognizing cultural landmarks can, and in this case does trump, the historical and architectural value of the building that you're discussing. Frank Vagnoni, who's the Executive Director of the Historic House Trust, teaches us in his anarchist guide to historic houses, that buildings live and change and transform for many, many reasons, some of which are architectural, some in usage, some in size, some in context. In this case, it can be as well a cultural reason. Mr. Vagnoni's use of the word anarchist is significant because it suggests a radical change. Someday, this cultural concept that calls us here today will not be the bailiff of anarchists. It will simply be a part of our cultural and social heritage, plain and simple. And it will turn out that a stable is actually much, much more than a stable.
Thank you, John. Are there other comments? All right, in that case, we can move to decision. Oh, yes.
Chair, may I? Don't be sorry. You know, we all have, have either lived or ventured through the village, and, you know, this ain't a pretty building. It ain't a pretty piece of architecture. Every time I look at it, I'm reminded of a line from Boys in the Band, who, some are old enough here to actually remember that play. Who is she? What was she? What does she hope to be? This building represents so many things, and, and, you know, in light of the recent events in Charleston, I'm continually reminded that someday we will be all more human. Someday, we'll understand that color, race, sexual orientation, even culinary orientation is something to be applauded and included in what we call our family of man, our humanity. This fantastic spot represents that period of strength and dignity for the LGBT community that absolutely deserves our designation and protection.
Thank you so much, Michael. Yes, Michael.
I just want to add something very briefly to those beautiful comments, and I think that, as was touched on by some of the testimony, the, this designation represents a challenge and an opportunity for us as a commission, and that challenge is the starting to grapple with the cultural designation, designating cultural landmarks that aren't necessarily worthy because of their aesthetic or architectural provenance. And I think that it's a, it's a really great oper, at first, it's a great starting point, such an important, world-important building. But I think it's, it's going to require us as a commission to develop new tools and new ways of thinking about broadening the definition of landmarks and kind of expanding how one protects these very, very important cultural touchstones. And I, I look forward to it, and I think it'll, it's a, it's a great next step for the next 50 years.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? All right. I'd like to, of course, thank all my Commissioners, and we can move to designation. I move that Landmarks Preservation Commission designate Stonewall Inn, 51-53 Christopher Street, Borough of Manhattan, as a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value, as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation, as set forth in the designation report for LP 2574, dated June 23, 2015. I also move that Borough of Manhattan, tax map block 610, Lot 1, in part consisting of land on which the buildings at 51-53 Christopher Street are situated, be designated as a landmark site.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The Stonewall Inn is now a designated landmark.